All here, all right, so. One second. Okay, um, with that said, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Regular City Commission Virtual Meeting of West, City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, June seventeen, and it is ten oh two. And this meeting is, is now called to order. Madam Clerk, if you could read the instructions to join our meeting, then we will proceed with the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the instructions are that the City Commission meeting will be held virtually with elected officials and city staff participating through video conferencing. This virtual meeting will be held on the Zoom platform. Members of the public may go in the meeting via Zoom at HTTPS colon slash zoom dot U S slash J slash three two five five two three six zero five nine. Also, the meeting can be accessed through, through phone dialing one three zero one seven one five eight two eight five nine two. And when you connect with the machine, it will ask you for a meeting ID. You dial three two five five two three six zero five nine, followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host accepts and gives you access to the meeting. That'll be all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that is requesting to join the meeting?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor. We have two members of the public already participating. As we can see.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, for the invocation, we have Major Delgado this morning.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless and protect us during this very difficult time and trying time, particularly for our law enforcement officers. Lord, help our officers, police chiefs, command staff across the country in bridging the gap between our chosen profession and all citizens. We pray for needed reform, both within our agencies and also by the general public as these compounding problems should be solved by working together. We pray that you place your healing hands upon those officers injured during the riots and demonstrations. We also ask that you continue to protect them and their families. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Major. Now, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron. Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez. Commissioner Suarez is present. Commissioner Suarez, you're on mute, so Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for May fifteenth, twenty twenty Special Emergency Commission Virtual Meeting.
Motion.
I need a, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Call the vote.
Uh, on the, on the motion, Commissioner, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote? He's on mute. Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
I don't have the vote of Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Suarez, you're on mute.
Mr. Q, can you un, can you unmute Commissioner Suarez?
No, I, I, I hear you.
Okay, we hear you now, sir. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Noted. Uh, next item is the presentation of minutes for approval for May twentieth, twenty twenty Regular Commission Virtual Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item five, public comments. We have not received any requests for public comments. At this moment, the public can enter or request to participate in the meeting in, in, in this item, specific item.
Madam Clerk, uh, I do, we do have in the chat, we have two members of the public. And I'm going to go ahead and read, they have questions. I want to acknowledge their, their questions and let them know that we, we will be addressing that in the agenda. It's on the agenda today. So we have, um, from Nicholas Children's Hospital, we have Natalie Castillo. She is an RN and would like to know if summer camp will be done this year because she is in need of childcare for her child since she is a frontline worker. And we also have Stacy, and Stacy is also an RN from Nicholas Children's. I don't see a question, but Stacy is on as well. So Natalie and Stacy, that question that you have is on our agenda today. And we'll be discussing it as soon as we get to that item. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, uh, next item, please.
Item six, report of the City Manager.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. I hope everybody's doing well. Uh, my report for this meeting includes the following items as a reminder. And in observance of the Fourth of July, which falls on a Saturday this year, City Hall will be closed Friday, July third for city business. As customary, we will have garbage collection on Friday, July third. In the absence of the fireworks, we have, based on your decisions, requested that Mr. Quintana produce a video of the, um, past firework displays at the West Miami Recreation Center, so we can air it on the city website in our social media platforms. Are there any questions on this item?
No, ma'am, I don't have a question.
Thank you. Moving forward, um, we have roof leaks now in the, in, in a portion of our City Hall roof. Mr. Penna has prepared a, uh, some specifications and contract documents. The roof leak appears to compass the area of the City Clerk's office, which is the worst one, my office, and a portion of the lobby area. So we are going to go out to bid. I was hoping that this situation could wait until the beginning of the fiscal year, but it does not appear that it can. Um, for those of you who have visited City Hall, you will notice that we have buckets, uh, collecting water that's falling from, from leaks in the roof in Anari's office, so we will bring you back our recommendation once the bids are open, are opened, I'm sorry. The, uh, next item on my report is Passport Services. City resumed passport services on Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty following our normal schedule and following the established, established guidelines by the passport agency and as well the new board guide. Currently, the service is reduced to new passport applications and those renewals that are acceptable to, to be.
Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
Can, can everyone, uh, mute their, their microphone? You're, you're coming in, you're, you're, you're in and out, and there's a lot of static and, and noise, background noise. Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll proceed now. I do hear about the, the portion of the report that deals with the passport services. Were you able to, okay, great. So we are following the guidelines. As you know, we have made some modifications to the front lobby that would, uh, you know, allow us to continue obeying the social distancing requirements as well, so. Phase one potable water system, we are finally at a process where bids will be open on Friday of this week pursuant to an amendment to the big budget packet. Uh, it will be open on Friday, June nineteenth, at three oh five PM, following the advertisement. The specifications and contract documents were advertised in the Daily Business Review and the Construction Journal that also avails those bids and specs, uh, to numerous contractors. The total sum for this project was budgeted at one point five million dollars using city funds and State of Florida funds. So we're hoping that these bids will come in. I don't know if our city engineer has something that he wishes to add on this, um, on this issue at this point.
Uh, no, no, I mean, I think you covered it. Uh, we're, we're expecting bids on Friday and, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, and, uh, there's a likelihood that, uh. Sir?
Madam, I have a question about, you said that there was a leak on Anari's, uh, the Clerk's office?
There's a leak in her office. The roof is damaged in the front of the City Hall and my office as well. It's like a strip of the main roof here at City Hall from what I am advised.
Well, you said that you were waiting for bids?
Yes, sir.
Well, the issue that you have right now is that, uh, excuse me, somebody's calling from, from you. The, the, the issue is that if you do have an emergency like that, uh, your duty is to correct it, uh, on a remedial services, uh, and actually all you have to do is request from the, uh, from Mr. Penna, what he has found, and you can proceed accordingly. I don't think that you would need a bid because, uh, the, uh, the more that you wait, the, uh, the damage will be greater. So I think that, uh, on an emergency service, I think that that should be done as soon as possible. As a matter of fact, if you do have insurance, the insurance requires that you take administrative, uh, I'm sorry, remedial services immediately. So I, I suggest that, uh, you, uh, you fix that leak as soon as possible.
Fully noted, sir. I will get with Juan, uh, this afternoon and, and, uh, and act upon your advice. So going back to the bid for the potable water system, there's a likelihood that after the review by our Director of Public Works and our City Engineer, that the City Engineer will be able to recommend an award on Wednesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty, after a thorough review of the bids and contract documents. The next item on my report deals with legal fees in connection with a pending litigation matter. The city has been billed a total of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred, eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents in legal fees in connection with a manual litigation by our legal team. The bill from Ackerman includes the most recent bill in the amount of fifty-two thousand, nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents that as of the writing was pending payment. We have a check here ready, already today to send to Ackerman. As a reminder, I want to just put out there that we did not have a budget allocation this year with this expense when this, this issue came up after the start of the present fiscal year, which started October first, twenty nineteen. I, I want us to be reminded that this matter will affect our ability to continue to increase our reserves, especially during such a difficult year. And it adds to the burden of properly balancing our financial outlook for this fiscal year and possibly next, depending on how long this litigation lasts. If you have any questions, I could take them up now or later. It's, it's up to the, the mayor and commission. Okay, Rebuild Florida, there's a, there's a grant opportunity for Critical Facility Hardening Program. It's a grant application with no match required. Robert Ruano and I have had several conversations, our grant writer, several conversations about the possibility of working on a, uh, project scope and a budget for the upgrade to our City Hall generator. Mr. Penna advises that, um, this generator is over twenty years old, and this, uh, grant opportunity would enable for us to apply for a new generator and whatever electrical connections need to be made. Uh, we also should be looking to secure our police department by providing, by completing the impact door for the front of the police department entrance and impact windows for City Hall. We still have three very antiquated, um, original windows that we would like to convert into impact windows and an air conditioning, energy efficient air conditioning for our community center, which the AC has undergone several repairs, and Mr. Penna advises as well that this unit is getting up there in years. And so we all agree, Mr. Ruano, Juan and I agree that these projects would be fitting under the Rebuild Florida Critical Facility Hardening Program. So if you have no, um, reservations, we would like to continue on with the application process. We have allotted a, a preliminary estimate budget for about, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for these improvements. And if accept, if accept, accepted, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity would fund this, this program for the city. We're working to meet the grant deadline, uh, by June thirtieth. And we have published our, our, our scope of the work and the estimated budget in the city website. We would like to invite public comment because I think that helps us score better with our grant application. So if anyone, um, has anything that they would like to add or ask us to reconsider, now is a really good time to do this.
Madam Manager, I have a question. Is this not, is this the application that you and I discussed or that you brought to my attention that does not require a match?
Correct. Correct, Madam Mayor.
So, any grant that doesn't require a match is, is, is wonderful news to my ears, so absolutely, please proceed on this and, um, and let Robert know, you know, give it his undivided attention because that this is free money and we don't have to match it and, um, it's going, with, everything that, that you have on here is definitely their needs, not wants. So, um, I, I do appreciate you and Robert, you know, going after this.
Right, and, and that being said, I think that all these grants that are out there, like Rebuild Florida, are aimed towards getting municipalities, um, to harden their infrastructure so that if and when we are facing a, or facing, uh, the, the threat of a storm, the damages are minimal if you're, if you're more prepared. So, um, we would like to continue working on this program and we do expect to be able to meet the deadline for the grant. The, there's a couple of things that I'd like to mention if possible that came up in the manager's meeting after the publication of my report, and I'll just report on that. I understand that there is a need to have, uh, from an email that Mr. Penna sent to our city attorney. I understand that there is a, a great interest and a need to have a zoning virtual meeting for some pending applications. So, um, in the manager's call yesterday, which is scheduled for every Tuesday at two thirty in the afternoon, we learned that only three to four cities are now holding virtual zoning meetings. And while, um, while these three to four cities, uh, continue to do so on a regular basis based on the applications that they have, the general sentiment is, is that, that boards and committee meetings should be delayed until further notice or until such time that the governor issues, um, an order that we need to go back to our regular, um, setting or, um, in-person venue to hold these meetings. So I wanted to report that just for your ready reference. In addition to that, I learned that there are no immediate plans to go into the next phase of openings only because the COVID nineteen cases, the numbers have skyrocketed over the last ten days. And so I believe that the general sentiment is, is they, they, although they're not planning to close down the phases that they have already enabled for opening or for a structured and safe opening, they're not going to go back and revisit that in the immediate future unless things really get out of hand. But there are no immediate plans to go into the next phase. Aside from that, I learned that only a few municipalities will be hosting summer camp programs. I think Don Michael and I have talked about this fifty or sixty times in the last week, and Megan as well is on this call. We have looked at every venue avenue possible to come back to you under a recommendation. I know this is an agenda item, so we won't wait to, we'll wait to hear, um, on this agenda item and provide you further information. That concludes my, uh, report at this time, Madam Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Manager, and I just want to, um, add to your, I'm sorry, I just lost something on my, on my screen here. Um, I just want to add to your comments about the, um, planning and zoning, um, that I've learned from my, um, Miami Dade County League of Cities Board of Directors and Mayor's calls. The county is not holding, um, virtual planning and zoning meetings, um, at this time, nor, nor onsite meetings. And those, those municipalities that have had them have had some challenges and some difficulties, um, with those meetings. So it was, it's only a handful that are doing it, but they have had some, some challenges. Um, so, um, and Mr. Penna, I mean, I don't know if, if there's something that's, um, a matter of, uh, of urgency or, or extremely important that we had, that we need to have this meeting. I would rather not do it virtually. If it's an emergency and we have to, we'll have to find a way to, um, with social distancing, have an onsite meeting. So please get with the manager and, and let her know if there's something of, of dire need that we hold this. Otherwise, I don't think it's in our best interest to hold a virtual planning and zoning meeting at this time.
Well, it's a point of order that I have, um, uh, I noticed, and that happened last time that we had. One of the commissioners absent, if the commissioner is absent, he won't be able to vote on any item that he is not present.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney?
Last time we had the same issue. One of the commissioners stepped out. So the commissioner that steps out cannot vote in any issue that is presented, has to be present.
No, I'm talking about planning and zoning. If, if Mr. Penna.
I understand it, but as I say, that's a point of order to advise you that to be aware that if a commissioner absents himself from the meeting, they cannot vote on the item that we're going to have present.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, we have several residences that, uh, want to do, uh, two-story additions to their homes. They've invested a lot of money in their plans and they're ready to go. And the only thing that's keeping them back is the Planning and Zoning Board hearing and the commission, um, meeting hearing afterwards. So I need more definition on dire need. So to them, it's a dire need. So what's a dire need to you?
Um. All right, I, let me, let me for the record, Madam Clerk, since I'm doing this meeting on my phone, I'm having to scroll this year. I can only see three people at a time on my screen. And it's just been brought to my attention that Commissioner Suarez is no longer a part of this meeting. So if anything is going to come to a vote, he will not be able to vote because he is not part of this conversation. So Madam Clerk, please make note of that and, um, advise me when he returns to the meeting. Uh, Mr. Penna, I guess this is, this is something we have to discuss. Um, you're right, my, 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 my phrase of dire need could be left up to interpretation. As long as we can, well, you, you said something important. I mean, if we have the planning and zoning meeting onsite, it has to be followed by a commission meeting, and our commission meetings are virtual. Um, Miss, Ma, Madam Manager and Mr. Penna, I'm going to ask for your, your recommendation or opinion. Do you think we can hold these, um, planning and zoning meetings in the community center so that we, it, it, does a community center provide us more room for social distancing than the chambers does?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So physically, uh, could we hold the planning and zoning meeting in the community center and maintain proper social distancing? Yes, okay. Um, so now it would be a matter of, do our board members, uh, feel comfortable enough to attend a planning and zoning meeting in person? And, you know, obviously, we need a quorum, so I would think now it's a matter of, of perhaps just, um, reaching out to them and, and let them know that we're, we're discussing this. And if, if we are going to have one, be comfortable in attending or, you know, being present, um, for a planning and zoning meeting. So if, if Mr. Penna, you or Anari or, or Tina could reach out to our board members and ask them.
Well, Madam Ma, uh, Madam Mayor, I would ask that, you know, we get a go-ahead from the commission, and if they don't want to meet, uh, in the community center setting, then we come back and report that. But if, otherwise, we're going to be delayed another two weeks before you all reconvene to get a go-ahead to meet if they say yes.
Oh, okay, I, 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 I understand. All right.
Projects have been waiting for five months.
Okay, yes, yes, Madam Manager.
Thank you, um, Madam, Madam Mayor, um, as Mr. Vialos, as Mr. Vialos would say, in an overabundance of caution, Mr. Vialos, are you, if this commission votes to have a planning and zoning in-person, uh, public hearing on, uh, zoning matters, are you able to attend?
Well, the issue is that, uh, certain persons that, uh, are a certain age should be in, uh, public settings. So this might be an objection by some of the residents that they cannot be there. But I will attend.
You will attend, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was a yes, Mr. Attorney, you will be, you will attend?
I will attend.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blanas, I think you need to speak up because she can't see you on her screen.
Oh, okay. But, Madam Mayor?
I, exactly, yeah, I can't, I, I can't see you. Yes, go ahead. So I'm, I'm, I was going to open up to the table now. I want to hear from, from all of you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, your, your audio, it's, uh, really bad. It's, it's fluctuating in and out somehow.
My audio, okay?
And this is, I, I should say, Madam Mayor, that this is one of the issues that, uh, because of the county had not been able to, uh, have a virtual meeting on zoning or any other, uh, meeting. Uh, they have limited access and Commissioner Blanes, uh, pointed out a very significant, uh, downfall. Uh, sometimes, uh, the, uh, way that the hearing, that, uh, by hearing, uh, you or some of the other commissioners is very hard. We should, uh, see how we can remedy this because Commissioner Suarez, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Blanes is totally correct.
I, I haven't said anything.
No, correct. I think he means correct in the sense that you could not hear me, sir.
Oh, I see, okay.
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 What I want, what I want to say is just very, very simple. What I want, what I want to say is just very, very simple, very uh uh to the point. In the past, when we've had residents that have wanted to add a second story to their home, uh, the issue that has come up and has been a contention uh with the immediate adjacent neighbors typically, you know, to the north, to the south, to the east or to the west, the immediate property is the placement of windows and balconies. You know, um, according to some of them, you know, their privacy is going to be, you know, uh uh interfered with. So there's got to be a really good understanding and agreement on where the balcony or the window is going to be placed. You know, I I I, you know, that's one point of contention that we have to make sure that we contact the adjacent residents uh uh that live, you know, a around the property that wants to do the second story so they can go there and voice their their concerns. And I think that, you know, if if we do that, then, you know, we might have a uh a smooth outcome. But if for some reason uh some resident is, you know, doesn't read the uh the the letter, doesn't get the letter and 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 doesn't show up, and then, you know, they see the construction of the property, and then, of course, you know, they're gonna they're gonna bring it up late, but, you know, they're 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 gonna have a contention, so.
Commissioner Blanis, that's a very good point, sir. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Um, and I think uh Mr. Penna will echo uh my statement. By law, we have to notice five hundred radius feet around the property. We send certified mail and regular mail to each and every property owner and or tenant living at the property. But we do send out notices with every application that covers not only the planning and zoning um hearing. Uh, anything coming before the commission requiring a public hearing on a zoning matter does get noticed pursuant to Florida statutes. Am I correct, Mr. Penna?
I'm aware of that, but I am going, um, what I'm saying is that we need to go one step further. Taking into consideration, you know, the COVID nineteen, the Zoom meetings, you know, people's minds not, you know, uh, in a normal uh, you know, uh, the the, you know, people have a lot of issues, a lot of worrying, a lot of concerns. So I think that we need to go one step further and make sure that those those residents that are immediate uh uh adjacent to the property in question, that they know what their neighbor intentions are. I think we would eliminate some contention if we do that.
You know, and I just thought of, I just have a concern. Can everyone hear me now? And can you guys hear? Okay, I just I just had a thought um about, uh, let's just say, one of these neighbors, considering it's a, you know, second story application. One of the neighbors um are elderly, and because of the COVID nineteen situation, they absolutely will not feel comfortable in coming to um in coming to the um to the planning and zoning medium meeting to voice their their objection and or or their acceptance of such. So, I mean, under the circumstances, I'd hate to put a resident in that in that position where they they have to come to object to it, but yet, you know, they feel that that they're putting their 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 life in in danger because of the COVID nineteen situation. So I'm not sure if I if I want to put our residents in that position um just to go forward with these requests for second stories. I mean, uh, they've waited five months, as Mr. Penna said, so what's a month or two more to be allowed to be able to um to make it safe, uh, safe enough for anyone who wants to come, irregardless of their age, to come to a meeting? Yes, Mr. Penn, uh, Mr. Attorney, go ahead.
Let me qualify my response when I said yes that I would attend. Uh, my attendance would be, of course, uh predicated by the fact that whether or not uh there is an upsurge of the coronavirus. If between now and then there's a coronavirus uh 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 eh eh expansion, so to speak, uh, I would abide by my physician's recommends, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Um, all right, I I do I do have other thoughts, but I want to hear from the rest of the table. Um. Thank you, Commissioner Blanis, for your um input. And I want to hear from Commissioner Blanca and from Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrone on this.
Um, thank you. I I think that, you know, uh, it's our duty to somehow, you know, uh uh alleviate, uh, you know, this issue from the residents that want to to build and construct their property. Uh, I think that if we do not make an effort, you know, I think that we would we would be doing, you know, uh, an injustice to them. You know, they have the right to proceed, and we have to find a way uh to to accommodate them, whether we do it through Zoom or 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 at the uh or or uh at the rec. Uh, but I think that we need to 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 do something. Of course, you know, it's going to take a little bit more legwork. Uh, you know, maybe the plans might need to be, you know, the delivered to 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 the residents that that are going to attend so they have it with them and they can see, you know, how the 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 layout, the planned layout looks like. Uh, taking into consideration what the uh what the attorney just mentioned, you know, there's there's a little bit more work involved, but I think it's our duty and we need to 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 perform. And we need to 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 alleviate the resident that wants to build and and construct a second story.
A mi encanta. That's what I love about the beach.
Well, there's no, there's no reason why we couldn't do both. Uh, if a regular meeting in a in a bigger setting and then Zoom at the same time. We just require another additional staff member there to monitor the Zoom questions.
So Mr. Penna, I'm about a Mr. Penna is talking about a mixed uh proposition. Is whether or not people have their, see, one of the problems with Zoom uh in the in zoning matters is that it's complicated because uh uh you have a limited capacity of reaching out to everybody in the city of West Miami. Uh, and that's one of the reasons that I was alleged by the city county attorneys in the county, that they don't have the capacity to reach everybody. So they have limited and they have suspended all uh zoning matters under such time as they have developed sort of a more progressive uh system. Uh, even though they don't show up, I have a later uh a claim that there is a denial of due process because you did not afford any particular person the right to attend. So um it's a, it's not an easy matter. Uh, as I said, I would be willing to attend, uh, provided that uh there's not an upsurge in the coronavirus and that I'm safe when I go out.
My thoughts would be if we're going to have this meeting, it's in our best interest to have it onsite and not Zoom.
I'll just drop my two sentences. Pause here. Um, I I agree with Commissioner Blanis that there's, you know, you try everything we can, but ultimately, I agree with the mayor. Um, and what I'm sort of agreeing from the city attorney, I I have significant due process concerns. Um, I don't think um Zoom is accessible to our residents, which is okay on a legislative matter where we're able to talk to our residents um outside of the meeting. Um, not so much so with um zoning matters. So, you know, as uncomfortable as this to keep delaying this, um, I'm not comfortable with restarting that just yet. Um, and we wouldn't obviously be doing anything that isn't uh sort of standard right now across local governments. Um, so I agree with, I think with what the mayor is saying. Um, and uh, I'm, you know, even though these two-story applications sometimes don't draw any contention or um, they sometimes do, and there is due process that needs to be followed. And I don't think that the process that we have going forward right now, which is to have um what was being presented, which is to have an in-person zoning meeting that's could be a death trap or uh to do a Zoom meeting that's inaccessible um is uh is in line with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, Commissioner Blanca, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this as well.
I agree with Commissioner Blanis.
Okay, um. Now, um, Commissioner Suarez wasn't present for the entire discussion, so I'm not going to seek his input on this. Um, Madam Manager, uh, did you have anything else on this or Mr. Penna? Um, so.
No, the only thing I would do is uh from our perspective, uh, we would work with our IT department. If you choose to allow these meetings to take place, to make sure that uh not only are we transmitting on our dedicated cable channel, that uh we are also uh capable of allowing public input through the city website. I I would actually, I would actually recommend, uh, aside from everything that has been said, and I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Blanis Blanis's statement on this issue, that people are so preoccupied with the general situation uh with COVID nineteen and the limit of of some folks to access the Zoom meetings or attend publicly. I'm I'm, my recommendation would be to hold off for another thirty days and reassess the situation at that time. And I know that there's a lot of investment when you look at building onto your house. And the timing has to be right, and people borrow money, and the interest rate is is uh perfect at a specific moment in time. And and the moment is right for that particular application to come forward. But I don't think anybody ever planned for anything like this, what we're living uh such difficult moments. So um unless Juan tells me otherwise regarding the applications and the sense of urgency is over the top, I would recommend you revisit this in thirty days and make another um another judgment call at that time. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Um. And I I can't say that I I don't agree with that. Um. Especially since we know we've all heard and read that the numbers are going up right now for whatever reason. Hasn't been determined yet, but the numbers are going up. And I I I'd say, maybe not wait thirty days, let's just discuss this again in our next meeting. Um. I I'm and I'm not disregarding, you know, the residents who have applicable who want to proceed with these applications. I'm not disregarding or 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 ignoring them at all. I'm just I'm thinking that right now, it's in everyone's best interest that we we hold off on this. So if everyone is in agreement, um, I say we we discuss this again at the next meeting, see where we are there with, you know, what's going on with the numbers and um and anything else that might come up or or get better in in that time. Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You guys can? Yes, okay, perfect. So um, that would be my recommendation is that we 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 hold off on this or discuss it again at our next meeting. Is there anyone opposed to that?
I am. I am, Madam Manager. I I think, you know, in thirty days from now, we could very well be saying the same thing. And, you know, if you put yourself, you know, in that resident's uh shoes that has the plans, has the loan, has the money, has the contractor, and and they're ready to go and they want to do their second story, you know, um. I don't think that you would feel very good about this decision. I think that, you know, we need to be sensible. We need to be practical. We need to be thoughtful. We need to plan it out. We probably do need to do a little more. But I think that, you know, when when there's a will, there's a way. You know, and and it it could very well be that in thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, we could possibly be in the same circumstances that we are right now. And then what? You know, what about that resident that wants to build his second story? So I I think, you know, I think that, but you you know, using a little bit of of common sense, you know, practicality, sensibility, you know, uh, you know, finding a way, I'm sure that 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 we can find a way, you know, to accommodate and 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 accomplish this. You know, it's not, it's it's not like it's 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 a, you know, uh, climbing Mount Everest, as they say. I think it can be done. I think it can be accomplished. Uh, maybe Mr. Penna and the city manager and um and um our public uh planning and zoning can can somehow come up with 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 some thoughts, some ideas on how to cover all the bases and get it done.
Well, uh, thank you, Commissioner. I was not saying, I was not suggesting to wait the thirty days as a manager um recommended. I was saying to just um to reevaluate this and 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 open up discussion again on the next meeting, which is two weeks away. Um, would you be comfortable with letting staff report back to us as to how they feel we can actually proceed?
Yes, that's 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 what I have in mind.
In the next meeting? Okay, and I and I I'm 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 fine with that. Um, so is there anyone opposed to um giving staff the direction to to come back to us with um some sort of proposition or or their thoughts or ideas or plan on how we could hold these meetings um in this absolute safest way possible? So then we can have those presented to us at the next meeting. Is there anyone opposed to that? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear um Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so um, thank you all, uh, Madam Manager, Mr. Penna. Um, if you could please come back to us with a plan as to what you feel is the absolute safest, prudent, um, best way to hold these planning and zoning meetings onsite. Have that ready for us for the next meeting. Thank you. Uh, Madam Manager, going back to your report, you had a letter in here that you did not discuss, or did I miss it, about the the flooding? Did you want to discuss that that letter that you have in your report?
Uh, Madam Mayor, actually, the city engineer who's taken a look at the situation on Eleventh Street was going to report on this issue. If you look at it, it's item number eight.
Perfect.
It talks about the Memorial Day flooding issue, and then this letter is there as a draft for your review input and comments.
Okay, perfect, uh, very well. Then, um, Madam Clerk, if we could go to the next.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes.
I need a clarification from Mr. Vialos, but he stepped away. What we're doing with the roof is not.
I'm not stepping away, I'm here.
Okay, what we're doing with the roof is a complete replacement, not a repair. So are we waiving bids or are we not waiving bids?
Uh, Mr. Penna, if it is uh uh something emergency that it's uh uh taxing the entire department and uh she might have uh problems with the records that she has, uh, you could waive bids because of the emergency. And that would have to be something that that would have to be a commission. So I think that upon your recommendation, whether or not this uh might uh jeopardize uh records or uh electronic equipment and things like that. Uh, I mean, if it's just a leak that can be uh repaired, not repaired, but uh just uh uh taking care of right away, uh, a roof replacement is something that costs a lot of money.
That's correct.
What you're talking about is uh just a replacement of the whole uh thing, but uh.
The replacement will include the the clerk's office and manager's office and the city hall, I mean, the police department lobby. Uh, we've been putting that off for years because of the possible expansion to a second floor. But uh, just like the other people that want their additions to their houses, they put off this stuff on in order to be able to do it all at once. We can no longer wait. Now the leaks are just keep coming in. And there's no way of detecting where it's coming in from.
If it's uh something that you could uh at least uh stop the leaks uh uh and wait for the uh bid process, I would suggest bid process. If you cannot, and it's a danger to the equipment and to the records and so on and so forth, uh, you may proceed uh with a remedial.
We're dancing around the issue, I just said it needs complete replacement, not repair.
Well, then you have to go to the bid process.
So we're not waiving bids?
Right. I mean, that's under the commission.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I think we have a duty to secure the area. I don't know if we have a blue tarp, Mr. Pena, that we can put over...
That's not possible, that's not possible. This is a flat roof.
I understand.
It's not a cable roof, where we can go from one end to the other end.
I understand, and I wanted you to put that on the record. Therefore, we are expecting to open bids on this rather quickly, correct?
No, it'll take a good 30 to 60 days to get bids out, back and forth.
So Mr. Attorney has opined that we have an emergency situation that has been defined? And that we may...
What are you talking about, Mr. Pena?
I don't know.
That could be anywhere from, I would estimate, $25,000 to $35,000.
Well, that's something for the commission to consider.
Okay, then I need to hear from the table. Commissioners, Vice Mayor, I need to hear from you all.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Something, I'm not sure who I heard this from, but they, I think it was the city manager, she said that we have a duty to protect and keep records, you know, that are within the city hall. We also need to remember that rainy season is coming. You know, it could rain, it could rain every day now for the next, you know, two, three months. I understand, and I know that when the roof is in really, really bad shape, and, you know, and if it's been repaired, you know, a few times, you know, you might as well just go ahead and just replace the whole roof, because, you know, you're basically wasting, wasting your money, you know, trying to patch it up here and there, you know? Because if it's not, you know, if it's old and it has some issues, you know, you might as well just redo the whole thing. So considering the rainy season coming along, and considering that, you know, it's our duty to protect the records, whether paper or digital, you know, I think, you know, that's a responsibility that we are foregoing, if, you know, if we're gonna take 30, 60, you know, 80 days to get this done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Could I hear from the rest of the table, please? Commissioner Blanca?
De suerte, de better.
Thank you. Commissioner Suarez?
Yeah, sooner the better, because the rainy season and hurricane season is here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm not gonna vote to waive bids on...
I'm sorry?
I will not vote to waive bids on this.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Yes, I'm the ones, my office is, I think, the one that is mostly most affected. I have two buckets here, because the roof is leaking, and I'm afraid it seems this rainy season is coming, that it'll keep leaking on the records room. And let me advise you that that is very delicate, and our records can be compromised. So I would encourage you to consider to repair or to replace the roof as soon as possible, because as I said, I mean, for you to have an idea, look at, look at the, this is my office. There is a roof that is leaking. I have it here, and I have another leaking on my back, on the roof. So it's very delicate, and I'm afraid that if we don't do something as soon as possible, it'll progress in the bad, I mean, more extreme possible way. And I would like, I would like to see that with our records and our equipment.
May... Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, Madam Manager, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Pena, off the top of your head, do you recall when the bid opening is scheduled for that portion of the work, the roof portion?
It hasn't gone out yet.
It has not gone out. Mr. Yaloz, if I may ask a question? Would it be legitimate or legal, that's a question, if we go out and secure three proposals without it being too big?
Under normal circumstances, we're waiting now until the last minute that the bid has not gone out. So the clerk is saying that her records are being compromised. So we're on the gun. See, it is true that we're having the rainy season, and Mr. Pena says that there's no way that we can put a blue carpet. You do have a problem. So your suggestion of having Mr. Pena securing three bids and requesting some sort of budget and the report back to the commission, that would be in this particular case. As you know, I have always advocated for having not waiving bids, but you have now a situation that we have been postponing for many years, and now we have an emergency. I mean, this is what was told by the city clerk, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I mean, folks, just for everybody's appeasement here, we will go through the regular process of sending out specifications to all bidders that we have bid before. It's just the process of advertising that we don't, we have to wait time if we go that route. I mean, we will put a two-week deadline, and all the companies that do submit will be presented to the city commission after evaluation of who's doing the work for us and what they're providing, and if they're meeting all our requirements. If not, we're just gonna go get Joe off the street and give him a job for $34,000, $40,000, and Tom will go right ahead.
So, Mr. Pena, are you saying you can have this information back to us by the next meeting?
We should have prices back by the next meeting, and people qualified to do the work, yes.
Okay, does anyone else have anything? If not, I'm ready, I can make a recommendation or give you my final thoughts on this. Anyone else? Speak up now, because I can't see everyone at one time. Okay, my thoughts are, based on everything the attorney said, Mr. Pena said, the clerk has said, and not only said, but showed us, we need to take care of this as soon as possible. If our attorney is giving us his opinion that we can proceed, as he stated, without any legal issues, then it is my recommendation that Mr. Pena comes back to us in two weeks with recommendations on whom can, on what company can do this work. Is there anyone opposed to that? Okay, all in favor?
Well, obviously, you reported me as no, because I already said I wouldn't vote to waive bids, but...
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anyone else opposed to that? Okay, I wanna hear from each, from every one of you. No, actually, I think we already voted, everyone said as soon as possible. If I'm not, if I corrected, we already, everyone else said as soon as possible, right? That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Madam Manager, Mr. Pena, proceed. Come back to us in two weeks with your recommendation on who will get this work done as quickly as possible. Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, next item is item seven, Report of the City Attorney.
Yes, as you know, we're still having and struggling with the Rito Sartorial Derecho de Vivir en Beniam against the city of West Miami. The petition was filed January 28th, and the response was filed on 5/14. They have a right to reply, and that was filed on 6/15. So we have about 15 days in which to reply. So therefore, I am requesting an executive session to be held as soon as possible. As soon as the city clerk can advertise and get a date to have it, I would suggest the earliest possible, because we cannot wait until the very end to report to you. Everybody has received by that time their reply, and you should all read it, and how much that would impact the city. So therefore, I would suggest that the clerk advertise it, and for you to be available either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday next week.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, based upon the attorney's request, I will call an executive session to address this issue. And I'm okay with, well, actually, Wednesday would probably be better for me, I don't know. What do the rest of you all, check your calendars and let me know? Madam Manager, you're on vacation soon, right?
I'm gonna be taking off, God willing, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday of next week. So I'm back here on Wednesday morning.
So Wednesday working?
May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
You realize that if you postpone it until next Wednesday, you're wasting four, seven days out of the 15 days that were allotted. So I would suggest, please, to make a very, very hard effort to do it as soon as possible, and to do it as soon as we all, including the judge, and including Lorraine, to be available. So please do the best, to do it first, the first available time. And because this is time of the essence, I mean, we don't control courts. Courts can do whatever they want. They can tell us, we have requested extensions, they have requested extensions. So I don't know, the courts are pretty clogged then. They have a lot of work, so they might not be able to give us extensions if we request one. So I think that, first of all, I suggest that everybody, have everybody read the reply, by the way?
Yes, sir, I have, in its entirety.
Okay. Well, anyway, this is what I would suggest, to be available either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Well, that's what we just said, Wednesday. I'd rather, I would rather have the manager present for this executive session. I think we've all...
The manager has appointed a substitute manager, and I think, Madam Mayor, that just because the manager is out on vacation, that doesn't take out that we can have a substitute manager. There's a, who's handling your affairs while you're away, Madam Manager?
In the memo that I issued to the mayor and city commission, I've designated Mercedes Leon to serve as an acting city manager.
So Mercedes is pretty competent, and I think that the fact that Yolanda Ylatt is not gonna be here, that does not deprive from the fact that we need that as soon as possible.
Mercedes will be fine.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what was that?
Mercedes will be fine next Wednesday.
If I may, Madam Mayor, and it doesn't matter, Mercedes is extremely competent, and so is Juan, and so is the chief, that they have been placed in acting capacities in the past. However, reasonable time for advertisement. If this ad gets sent out pursuant to the date that you select today, it'll probably be published on Friday, am I correct, Mary?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, Madam Manager.
Okay, so that means the publication will appear on Friday of this week. That gives you two business days, Monday and Tuesday, before your executive session. So that would be reasonable, I think, in this case, due to the urgency of the matter. Again, I... Sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So if you call it for Wednesday, I'm back. If you call it for sooner than Wednesday, I will appoint Mrs. Leon. And like I said, I have no reservations about her competency to sit in on my behalf. But I think we should afford the reasonable...
Well, you have to leave, you have to allow me to have leave to... But I still have a conference call this afternoon, a Zoom conference call with the judge and Lorraine, which is, we're working together on this. And I can report back to you that, but I would like to have it the sooner...
Do they have to come here for the meeting? Do we need to hear?
Commissioner, the executive session will be via Zoom?
Zoom.
It's all, it's all gonna be via Zoom. All right, so Wednesday, the 24th. Commissioner Blanca, you said that was fine with you? Commissioner Suarez?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, it all depends whether or not we, all three attorneys can be together. So Wednesday, if you approve just Wednesday, and you set for Wednesday, and we cannot be available, then you will have to postpone it again. So please don't make a definite date, because we can be in trouble.
Do we need the three of them together?
Yes, we do.
Why?
Because this is a very complicated matter. We have been working, and we are, we have filed ourselves with the court. So we do need for all three to be together.
Mr. Attorney, I mean, Commissioner Blanca, this will all be via Zoom. Mr. Attorney, I was only saying, I was, I was only suggesting a date because of the urgency you had. I have no problem with back from you. And then, and then the manager can check with everyone to see what date works for them. So I'm calling an executive session upon your request. You will get back to us after you, after you talk, after you meet with the other attorneys, and we will decide on a date. Does that work?
This afternoon, but as I say, please don't set it for a particular date, because then that, they would have to be published by the clerk, and we cannot make it, because we have prior problems with the courts. You see, it was scheduled when we, the courts are all the powerful. If we have an appointment with a court, we have to...
If I can interrupt you, Mr. Attorney, if I can interrupt you, I believe that's what the mayor said. So, I mean, I think we're all in agreement. So, which is, I think we should move on.
Right, just, Mr. Attorney, I'm not giving a date. I'm calling an executive session, date to be determined after your meet, after your call with counsel. You will then let it get, the city manager will check in with all of us, and we will select the soonest date possible. So executive session has been called, date and time to be determined. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item eight, Report of the City Engineers. It has one issue here, the main 26th flood on Southwest 11th Street.
Morning, Madam Mayor, Commissioners?
Good morning.
Before we get into the storm event, I just wanna reiterate, as Madam Manager stated, we're receiving bids this Friday for the first phase of the potable water project. We've had quite a bit of interest from the contracting community, probably have about a dozen or so plant holders. So we expect to have, we expect to have a good amount of bids. And we'll hopefully report back in the next meeting as to, as to how those bids came in, and hopefully have a recommendation for award later in July. So we're looking forward to that project, much anticipated, of course. So to get into the issue of the recent rain events, I just wanted to report to the commission, the kind of investigations that we did and the findings. There was a particular area where residents experienced some severe flooding, and we received some complaints. So Madam Manager had us, you know, kind of do that background research and provide the city with a... uh you know, kind of do that background research and 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 provide the city with a a memo regarding our findings. So the basically, the month of May uh is has been one of the, was one of the rainiest uh months on record. Uh we had about, leading up to the Memorial Day weekend, there was recorded about two hundred percent over normal uh monthly rainfall and that prior to the the Memorial Day storm, so there was, there was a a highly saturated condition in the groundwater. Uh ground, the groundwater was excessively elevated, uh we don't, we did not, we're not able to get the exact data from the Water Management District as it hasn't been published yet for the monitoring well that we have in the area, but we're waiting on that information, but in any case with the amount of rainfall that we experienced and the flooding we saw, we can, we can presume that the groundwater was uh extremely high in that area. Uh now, uh the storm itself that hit on Memorial Day weekend uh at various locations around the county, we we saw a recording of over twelve and a half inches of rain over the three days, which is uh on the order of about a fifty-year storm event, uh it's almost as much as we saw in the early two thousands, those those mega rainfalls that we had that actually prompted our our uh our stormwater master plan and pump station projects, so it was a a pretty significant event i- i- in historical context for Miami. And I guess on on the positive side, looking at uh the west side of the city where we're served by the two major pump stations, uh there was very little flooding, the system worked well as as it has been for for nearly fifteen years, so uh we were happy to see that, however, uh on the east side of the city, uh where we're served primarily by an exfiltration trench or French drain system, when you have this excessive uh groundwater levels and this type of storm event, we're gonna see flooding. You know, the 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 from from what I've heard reported that the flooding did subside with time, which is what we would expect as the rainstorm ends, the groundwater starts to dissipate and the exfiltration trenches start working and the water, the water goes down. So i- it is something that you would expect for those systems, those systems are only designed to handle five to ten-year storm events. Going back a little bit in history, the reason why that the east side of the city is not served by pump stations is is because it is relatively higher. Uh the ground elevations on the east side of the city are on average above the elevation of ten, whereas on the west side were, you know, five or six. So it's it's a much higher area of the city, however, there's still pockets that are that are isolated such as uh this area of Eleventh Street uh between Fifty-Ninth and and Sixtieth Court, so this particular area that flooded has kind of a depression in the middle of the road and it is isolated. Uh that that area, we went back and looked at our records, we actually uh did some work there back in two thousand eight. There was a an exfiltration trench extended i- along that roadway uh and designed again for five to ten-year storm event. So, you know, we would expect uh some level of flooding there. And we would expect that it would subside as as the storm uh you know, ended and the groundwater went down. So um it it's not something that that we were surprised by, but um you know, but it is something that if the commission chooses, we can look at uh furthering further, further looking into those areas as to what type of improvements we would need to do. Um we we did kind of look at it conceptually to look at, you know, what we can do in these particular areas on the east side of the city to help alleviate some of this flooding under major storm events. Uh it is, you know, it is a pretty significant investment that we would have to do just because it it is so far uh from any kind of positive outfall. When I say positive outfall, I mean either either a pipe that leads to a canal or a pipe that leads to our pump stations which is pumped out. Uh so the systems on the east side, like I said, are exfiltration trench or French drain, which basically they just dissipate into the groundwater, they're not actually connected to an outfall. So in order to do that, um we would have to uh either, we would have to connect the system to the west, whi- which would require a pretty significant extension uh of pipe to the west side. Uh and and likely, we would also have to increase the capacity of the pump stations to take into account this additional area. Uh so, you know, that type of work, you know, ballpark is uh what I reported to the to the city manager, you know, ballpark estimate for something of that magnitude, we're looking at maybe seven fifty to a million dollars. Or we can look at uh expanding the the existing exfiltration trench system uh which would cost on the order of about three hundred thousand dollars, but again, that won't, that won't necessarily protect the areas for this type of twenty-five, fifty-year storm event. So that's kind of, that that was kind of our findings. It's, again, it's, it's, it's what we would expect for this type of system. Uh but unfortunately, when you have this type of rain event uh with this type of underlying condition of uh just continuous rainfall, i- this is, this is what's gonna happen. Uh we just, you know, we design these systems so that they're able to dissipate the water within a reasonable amount of time and that we protect structures, so. Uh with that, uh could take any questions?
I I do have a question, um thank you, Mr. Alonso, and I understand I under- clearly understand everything you said, but I, this might be a question, Mr. Penner, Mr. Penner, is there anything we can do, um you know, we we are in rainy season, is there anything we can do like on a preventative or maintenance or or anything we can do to alleviate? Um I don't know, drain these drains, I I don't know, I I don't know anything about what you, what you do and how you do it as far as cleaning out these drains, but is there anything we can do um like a preventative measure like on a regular weekly basis now that we're in rainy season to help i- in case we get another, you know, three-day rainstorm like we did before?
Uh uh right at the, at the valley of Southwest Eleventh Street where this water starts to to pu- uh to puddle up, there are two large structures with uh as Frank uh alluded to, we extended the drain field on that uh in two thousand eight, we have cleaned them every year since uh that time. Uh there is nothing else to do to go there and put a truck there, all we'd we'd be doing is pulling groundwater out from and it would just come back in from other directions. Uh we'd be doing reverse of the of the French drain system. Uh they're clean drains, they're functioning drains, it's just that when the water table is that high, being kept by the South Florida Water Management District, if you go along A Street, you see the canal is very high, uh you go to the thirty-fourth Street Canal, you see it's very high. All that water is being uh preserved for later on this year in uh December, January, February, when we have a low season. So they're not gonna throw all that water out to the ocean and lower the levels just for us. Uh and this is complex, as you saw in Doral, they were uh completely underwater, Sweetwater had problems with um severe flooding too. Um there's nothing to do, uh except maybe lobby the South Florida Water Man- Manager District uh get the water out, but I doubt that they will answer our calls.
Can, I say, okay, so there's, so there's nothing proactive that we can do to maintain the
We have Ma- Madam Mayor, I mean, the the, you know, the the one thing that you can do is just maintain the systems clean, um you know, French drain systems uh tend to clog up uh over time, uh you have intrusion of tree roots, things like that, so you know, the main thing is to try to keep the systems clear uh which which as I I I've discussed with Juan, they do on an annual basis, which is uh which is, you know, typically what we what we uh, actually, we we typically uh recommend a five-year maintenance program, so to do it every year is even goes above and beyond what most cities typically do. So i- it's really, i- it's really all you can do as preventative uh measures, you know, the system now is twelve years old, but we added there the lifespan of an exfiltration trench system is about twenty years. Uh so, you know, probably in the next, uh you know, five, six years or so, we'd be looking at maybe replacing that system. Um and the only reason for that is that over that twenty-year span, uh you start really uh clogging up, you know, it goes beyond just just regular cleaning and you just clog up the system, so after twenty years, there, you typically need to replace them. So we would be looking at probably within the next decade or so to do that in certain areas throughout the city. But aside from that, when you, the the thing is, a storm event of this magnitude, you know, it's, it's, you need, you need pumps, not even a gravity outfall uh would have worked. You know, the the canals go up to a stage up to a certain level where it just, the water just won't go out, so and hence why we built the pump stations, so. But then again, the, you know, the pump station is such a large capital improvement that it really has to be done for areas that that really, really needed, which is what was happening on the west side of our city where you were having structures, uh homes frequently flooded. You know, that that's kind of really the trigger to go pump station, so you start affecting structures. So on the on the wa- on the east side of the city, you know, I I I would, I would still recommend using exfiltration trenches, it's just expanding the system, maintaining it um and and maintaining it over time in terms of replacement. And just notifying residents, you know, that they're, that if they're in an area, for example, like Eleventh Street where it's a big sag in the middle of the road and if you live in the bottom of that sag, you're gonna see road flooding. And I was, I I was at least happy to see that there was no structure flooding, which is really the intent of these systems, is you're trying to protect uh structures, so we expect in some of these areas, you're gonna have road flooding, it's just um for how long, you know, i- they, from reports I I I received, it dissipated, you know, within a day or so, which is, which is uh uh which is acceptable when we design these systems, now if you see water standing for, you know, two, three, four days, there's a bigger issue and the system is not uh, it's not draining, so that's kind of what we look for and as right now, the system is operating the way it's supposed to. But, you know, it could be improved upon, however, it's, it's, again, it's a large capital investment.
Okay, and Mr. Alonso, this letter, this draft, this letter, the uh city put on it, so is this draft, in your opinion, um ready to go, can we send this out to the residents? Um is it accurate enough and explains enough that we can get this out to them?
Yes.
Perhaps tomorrow, okay, um has everyone, um I like to ask the table if everyone has read this letter and if you're in agreement with putting this out to the residents as information, so they know pretty much what we've done and what what the solutions are and if and when we can do them. Is anyone opposed to the sending this letter out to the residents that are affected? I don't hear anyone, I hear no opposition, so Madam Manager, um please get this out to the residents um as soon as you can.
Right, I will, Madam Mayor, and I just wanted to bring it to you, to your attention and everybody's input here. Uh because I I felt that it was important that uh their complaints or concerns did not fall on deaf ears and I would further encourage the commission to see if there's any way moving forward and that we can lobby either pursue grants and lobby for let it legislative appropriations to see if we can come up with the money to have a maybe a two-to-three-year plan to go ahead and make the necessary improvements that as being recommended by the city attorney, I mean, the city engineer, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, and Mr. Penner, let me ask you a question, would would it hurt if we put a letter together to the South Florida Water Management District, like you said, would that hurt us? If we put a letter out to them?
No.
I mean, I mean, you said you don't think they'll respond or listen, but it can't hurt to put it out, right?
Correct.
I see you smiling. I mean, if that, if that, if that might help, you know, if we don't ask, we don't know, so yeah, it it might get ignored, ignored, it might not, who knows, but if we don't ask, we won't know. So if you could put together a letter and and have it ready for us for the next meeting and I say, let's send it out and ask. I I wanna be able, be be sure that we um, we do everything possible, so if that's a possibility, I I say, let's do it. So how about, if you can have that ready for us for next meeting, um we will uh review it and and let you know, okay, um does anyone else have anything else on this? Um Frank, is that the end of your report?
Yes, that's the end of the report.
Are there any questions for the engineer on his report or any concerns or questions for him about anything?
Madam Mayor, if I may, before you leave this item, thank you. Um and this question would be for our city engineer, if I may, Madam Mayor, that um Frankie, are you um are you comfortable that we can get the readings from the canal before we write a letter without having all of our facts?
I I I don't know, because that data comes from the USGS, um they updated i- i- it's kind of, it's inputted manually, so they update it every two, three months. I I've been checking it over the past couple of weeks, the last data they have is from like April, so I'm expecting a a data dump to be put on there sometime soon, but I I I I really don't know when the district, I I did reach out to the Water Management District to see when the information will be posted and they just told me the same thing, they just wait for the USGS to post the data, so. I I I will check, uh I will check from time to time to see if the data is there, because I personally wanna know what you know, what that was and I wanna report back uh to the commission as to what that uh groundwater level got up to, because it is, would be interesting to see. Uh and I would really tell, tell the the story of of why things happened the way they did.
Perfect, so we'll let, we'll wait your backroom, Frankie, on that, um.
I mean, to be, to be fair with the Water Management District, you know, their function is really to manage the function of the canal systems. And what they do prior to these major storm events, you know, they see this stuff coming. It's not like they just sit around and and wait, so they, they, for, I'm sure most of you that have been around here a long time know uh the the massive C-four impoundment that was built out west and they basically backpumped the canals into that impoundment in order to draw down the canals and anticipate these storm events. So that system, you know, although we saw a lot of flooding throughout Miami holistically, uh just talking to some of our other clients and some of the other projects we've done over time, uh the city's system overall, the county system performed amazingly well compared to twenty years ago. So if this was twenty years ago, you know, pre all these projects that we saw in the early two thousands, it would have been a, you know, a twelve-and-a-half-inch rainfall, we would have saw the same things we saw in ninety-nine and two thousand, these massive floods where you know, people were stranded, homes were flooded, we really didn't see uh we saw a lot of flooding, but we didn't see kind of the major catastrophic flooding we saw back then, so as a as a whole, it was, it was good to see that those twenty years of work have done something, so.
Thank you, Frank, uh I I'm not, Madam Mayor, I'm not insisting on this letter, I'm, I only brought it up because Mr. Penner uh mentioned it. If if staff, if you feel, it, you know, it's a waste of our time and 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 energy to do so and I mean, it it was just a suggestion, I'm I'm neither here nor there, I'm just saying, if we don't ask, we won't know, so you know what, I'm gonna leave it up in in your, I'm gonna leave it to your very capable hands. Um Madam Manager, um Mr. Alonso, Penner, you decide if you think it's 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 a good idea to send it, if we'll get anything out of it, if it's a waste, if you think it's a waste of our time and it'll do nothing or provide us nothing that we need, then don't do it. Um I'm, you guys are know know more about this than I do, and the only reason I mention this is because Mr. Penner brought it up um in conversation, so with that, let's, yes, Madam Manager?
If I may, and and I know you wanna move on, um but I think a letter, I think a letter or doing a fact-finding is fine and handy. But I think, a- and I was gonna recommend, um my statement was gonna be, I was gonna recommend that you possibly entertain a resolution, I think that has more of an impact. It goes places, um it gets more attention, a resolution of the mayor and city commission encouraging the South Florida Water Management uh to acknowledge the situation that we have and how we are affected adversely from uh the high uh the the canals being higher and asking them to take appropriate action to allow our community not to get funded, uh I mean, to the level or to the extent and it's safe for them to move water into their reservoirs. Um I think that this happened when we, um you know, emails and letters are fine, they get filed, but I think a resolution has more of a punch, if you would, um more of a political muscle and letting the agency know that the commission is all you know, in favor of finding us, asking to put forth a a solution to assist with our problem. That also paves the way for opportunities in the future to apply for grants, they are awarded money from the state obviously, because you know that we are all paying taxes into the South Florida Water Water Management District and at times, they do have money to spread around and maybe that would make us eligible by identifying on the problem, it would make us eligible in the future to go after money from them, I think it's more of a formal statement if anything else. So that's what I would encourage you to
Okay.
We saw that with the public situation, you know, we sent once and three years sending them emails. We call that thought, and it was not until you adopted that resolution. That it really caught someone's eyes, and so that's why I'm, uh, offering that alternative.
Okay, do I hear any opposition to, uh, giving staff to go ahead to prepare a resolution? For us on this, um, subject. I hear no opposition, um, Madam Manager, please work with Mr. Alonso, with Mr. Penna. Um, our city attorney and prepare a resolution for us. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Nine committee reports reported the mayor.
Uh, I only have not so much a report, but I just want to, um. We all got an email from the manager, I believe it was last night, that, um, Vice Mayor Diaz Padron. Um, went, um, asked committee, Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa, if she could continue funding our meals. For our seniors, and she very graciously, uh, was able to do that, and I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Manager, this would be her third allocate allocation of monies to continue the funding. For our senior meals, and I just, um, want everyone to know, um. How grateful we are for her always coming, um, coming to the table and helping us, especially with our seniors. And I believe it's going to run now, the meals are gonna run through. End of August, so yes, um, and if you have any other details you can provide. On that, Madam Manager, but I just want to be sure that, um, that I thank her, and, um, I I greatly appreciate. Everything she does for us in that respect. If the, any more details you can provide on that allocation and as far as the meals are concerned?
Yes, and it's important, Madam Mayor, to to know or for the community to know that we've received over eighty thousand dollars with this commitment. This last commitment from Vice Chairwoman District Six. Uh, for our senior meals, and so this is extremely helpful at such a difficult moment in time. It also stays, it keeps with a new norm manual, uh, of of, uh. You know, isolation or quarantine, if you want to call it that, you know, it's, uh, some of our elderly people are more fragile. And more susceptible. Um, because of their. So, um, I I myself, I'm very grateful for this, uh, contribution and the service that the city. Because of her efforts is able to provide to the senior citizens, so, um. And 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 I want to also thank Vice Mayor Diaz Padron for. Ri- bringing this, uh, forward and and having these conversations. With, uh, Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa and and for, it's that type of relationship that makes good things, um, happen.
Uh, thank you, Madam Manager, and and yes, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for reaching out to our Vice Chairwoman. Um, I do not have anything else to report. Let me look here real quick, no, um, Madam Clerk, I don't have anything else to report, so next item, please.
Any other committee? No, so we move to next item, item ten, unfinished business, none today. Item eleven, under new business agenda, item as item eleven A, report a recommendation by the Office of the City Manager. Regarding proposed and recommended changes to the city's medical life insurance benefits for the city officers. Employees, mayor and city commission, city attorney, city clerk. To take effect August first. An amendment to the city ordinance, Article, uh, one administration, section two point six, title group insurance by city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may proceed with that report and recommendation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, on June tenth, I issued a memorandum to the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami proposing. Some changes to our employee benefits, uh, particularly dealing with the medical life. Uh, medical prescription vision and and life insurance policy. Over the years, we have been monitoring the rising cost of providing insurance benefits. To our employees, to the mayor and commissioners. Uh, to attorney and those city officers designated by the code under section two point six. Um, for, um, employer paid benefits. And, um, I think at the time when we went with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, it was determined, and even by them, when they quoted the insurance. That we had a very rich program and and I'm, I, we are all blessed to have, uh, great, uh, medical insurance through the city. Moving forward, I think this is an area of the budget that we need to put a stop or a break, if I would. And, um, after reviewing our premiums and the yearly trend increases and the. Aging of our group and our group insurance, I am proposing to the mayor and city commission that we cease. To offer life insurance benefits to future employees. Future mayor and city commission members, future city attorneys. Future city managers, future city clerks, and any other city officer to reduce and to reduce. A limit of the life insurance, if if you choose to offer it, but, um, reduce it, um. To any of our, uh, law enforcement officers from a hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars while serving. This office is recommending that these changes take effect on August first. This recommendation, we we would not be affe- uh, uh, affecting anyone who's here now. This would be moving forward, looking at future generations and looking for ways on how to keep costs down. Um, furthermore, I also propose that moving forward, the mayor and city commission authorize a change to the section of the code. Limiting medical and life insurance coverage to newly elected officials. Um, and a future, uh, attorney to the member only at no charge. With the option of offering dependent coverage at the established rate of contribution in effect at the time. Equal to what employees pay. Um, I did a survey a couple of years ago, uh, because it it was brought to my attention that we should. Do a survey and find out what other cities are doing, and I was extremely, um, I want to say surprised that. Most cities only offer medical and life, no life benefits, but medical insurance to the members of the city commission. And while we have benefits in place now for the members that are here, employees that are here. I think we need to look at, um, the future, and I also need to. Uh, bring to your attention that I would also like to encourage the mayor and commission not to permit or allow under any change. Uh, any payment by the city for post-service insurance benefit. To one, uh, to future city officers, and that means everybody. Who is defined as an officer of the city of West Miami, under section two point six defining insurance benefits. Um, this is consistent with what is presently in effect in other cities. And, uh, this is done in an effort to curtail future financial liability to the city. Um, I realize that this is an unpopular issue for a manager to bring to the light. However, we need to do everything that we can to curtail future expenses. And we should act responsibly with assisting and planning for attrition and for future generations. Uh, like I said, um, I'm I'm available to discuss this on a one-to-one, I think I have with. Most of the members of the city commission at some point or other, I've talked to you about this issue. And as we get deeper into the budget and look at the potential consequences of COVID nineteen. And everything that we're facing in our country, I think we may need to plan for some struggles along the way for the next couple of years. Um, if this concept is approved or recommendation. I would, uh, um, ask our city attorney to assist us with the preparation of an ordinance for. Um, so that we can amend section two dash six, which I've attached to my memo. And and again, I welcome your questions, this is not a personal thing, on the contrary, we took, uh, we took the time. To carefully craft out a recommendation for for the future. Not, you know, to take away any benefits at this time from from someone who's already on board and receiving a benefit. That concludes my my memo presentation. Thank you, Madam Manager, do I have any questions on on this item? Okay.
You do from the audience.
I do from the audience, Madam Clerk, could you please? Could you please see if there's any questions from the audience? From the from the residents participating?
I'm checking, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm using my phone and and I have to change, uh, screen.
I got it, Mayor. Thank you, I have a a question from, uh, Maria Diaz. And, uh, Maria Diaz's question is, will this include officials who are re-elected? And the answer, uh, to my proposal, if I may, is not, we're grandfathering anyone. Who is on the plan, the medical and life plan at this time.
You know, I I I think, I think, um. Ms. Diaz brings up a good point. The. When 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 a commissioner is 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 elected, re-elected. He's elected for the first, I mean, he's elected as a new, so he he ceased to be an employee and officer of the city, and then. Becomes an officer of the city again, which was a term that ends. Um, so, I don't know. I don't know if, um. That's something that's contemplated, and I I I haven't read, I don't think the ordinance been drafted yet. I I think this is a recommendation, but, um, if that's your intention. Um, I think that should be, um, stated pretty conspicuously there. Um, because, un- unlike the employees that we have now. Um, who are, you know, normally, they're they're much easier grandfathered in than a city officer. That is for a term of, a term of four years or two years or whatever it is. And then they're re-elected and they start anew, so, um, that's something to consider.
A- and again, if I may, Vice Mayor, great, great, uh, great point, um, it, that would have to be defined by any change. Uh, or as part of the public hearing, if it ever makes it to a public hearing on the. Change of the ordinance, it would have to be written in the in a fashion. That is acceptable to the commission, we're recommending now whether. Uh, an elected official who's serving at this time. Meaning that person is considered new at a moment when he or she re- is re-elected. I look at it as an incumbent, I don't look at it as a new person, but then again, legally, it may be defined in another fashion.
I I I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because I think that the question, um, was, uh, very. Was is interesting, um, and that's something to to consider, I'm I'm obviously in agreement with you. Um, you know, either way, whatever, however you want to do it, I I agree with you, it has to be reformed, so, um, just just something to consider.
So, Madam Manager, this is, this is something we would discuss. And and, uh, opine on at the time the resolution is written. Or do you need us to just discuss an opinion on that now, so that you you have clearer direction?
Ma- Madam Mayor, you're in and out, I'm sorry, I think I I caught, what I caught from your comment was is that. You wanted for my office to give you a direction as to where we move from here, departing from this memo. The reason why it was presented in this way is because we, uh, pursuant to the rules of the table. What you do is you bring a concept and you have the commission tell you whether you can take it to the next step. In this case, would involve a change to the ordinance.
Okay, so we would opine on on that particular, the the that particular, um. Uh, comment as to whether or not it would be, anyone re-elected would be new or incumbent. And whether or not they would be grandfathered or not, we'll we'll opine on that at the time that it comes as as a resolution. We're not going to discuss that now, right? Okay, so, so you're looking for us is is, um, the the agreement to proceed. With the resolution or to prepare the resolution, so do I have, hear any opposition, um, from anyone? To giving the manager the instruction to proceed and prepare the resolution on this item?
If if, Madam Mayor, would. An ordinance for, it it wouldn't be a resolution.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion, do I have a second? Madam Clerk, hold the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero item passes.
Madam Clerk, before you proceed, a point of privilege, I need a two-minute break, I am almost out of battery, I need to run and get a a charger. So if I could, if we could break for two minutes, I promise it won't be longer than that. A two-minute break and I will return, please, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I apologize. Um, if you could please see if I have quorum and we can proceed.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, so this one, we're gonna go to a roll call to make sure that we have quorum. Uh, so Mayor Rodriguez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón? Is he present? Commissioner Candida Blanca? She's present, I can hear her. Commissioner Juan Blanes? Mayor Blan- um, Commissioner Blanes? And Commissioner Suarez? Mayor, I can't, uh, uh, I mean, hear attendance from Commissioner Blanes and Suarez. So as of now, you have a quorum of three members of the commission? You, you let me know how would you like to proceed, Madam, uh, Mayor?
Madam Clerk, you said we have quorum, correct?
Yes, we have, uh, Mayor, uh, Rodriguez, Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón, Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Suarez, Commissioner Blanes.
We have quorum, let's keep on going.
Yes. We have quorum, please proceed, please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Next item would be item eleven B, which is report and recommendation on the bid opening for the City of West Miami Recreation Center, tennis court and basketball projects, partially funded by the Water Conservation Fund grant on the City of West Miami with use of Recreation Center impact fees. This is Vice City Manager and Director of Public Works.
Um, Madam Mayor, for me, I'd like to, uh, depend on this item. Uh, we are working with a grant project here and it will help us, uh, complete the goals of the application for the Land and Water Conservation Grant Fund. Juan?
Yes, ma'am.
From here?
Uh, sure, just, what number are we on?
Uh, B, item under no business subject items.
And for. Blanes has joined the meeting. I, uh, does Commissioner Suarez has joined the meeting?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pena.
We went out for bids, uh, for the work at the, the last part of the work that's left to be done at the Rec Center for this ma- uh, grant. It is basically, uh, resurfacing the basketball courts, uh, to eliminate the cracks that are in the asphalt pavement. And then, uh, uh, going ahead and applying the acrylic coating to, to have the color, uh, courts that we have. And, uh, we received, uh, two bids. One of them was, uh, uh, disqualified for not bidding what we requested, and the second, the first one, uh, was, uh, uh, qualified, and also their amount was, uh, fifty-eight thousand six hundred, I believe.
Correct, my, uh, Mr. Pena.
Uh, we advertised for thirty days, and we went to the paper, we went to, uh, all the, uh, known companies on the internet that we could reach, and a lot of them just, uh, refused to bid because the project was very small. The one from a court, they meet all of our requirements, and they're ready to start the work as soon as, uh, they're awarded the project and our recommendations to award.
Thank you, Mr. Pena. Anybody else? Want to, um, want to talk about this item?
Oh, just a few questions. Um, on the agenda, and I, I'm having trouble pulling up the attachments, it'll open up soon, but I'm sure you have it in front of you, so you can just say, um, it is partially funded by, uh, impact fees. How much is the split? Just for.
Uh, the split is fifty-fifty. So, we would, uh, fund, uh, the twenty-five, um, twenty-five-three from, or, I'm sorry, not twenty-five, it would be, uh, twenty-seven-three from each, uh, each side.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Park Director, do you have anything on this? Anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pena.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions or co- comments on this item before we continue? I know we need to, um, continue. Anything else on this item? Okay, um, I need a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, we need to read the resolution, which is item eleven C.
Please read the resolution.
Item eleven C, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter an agreement with my court construction for the purpose of resurfacing two tennis courts and two basketball courts located in the City of West Miami Recreation for an amount of five fifty-eight thousand six hundred dollars to be funded partially by the State of Florida, uh, Land Water Conservation Fund grant and, um, Water Conservation, okay, says Land and Water Conservation Fund grant percent match from the City of West Miami Park InfraFeast budgeted for two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year on the line, uh, line item five seven two. It is, I believe, is six zero two, Madam Mayor, Manager?
Correct.
Providing for effective date.
Madam Mayor, before you call the vote, there is a question from the, uh, chat.
Yes, I was just going, I saw that, I was just going to comment when the, uh, when the, um, when the clerk was done. And the answer, have we brought up reopening on the Rec Center? No, we haven't. But because I know that we do have, uh, members of the, of the public waiting, Madam Clerk, I would like to take that item, um, that's, um, being questioned out of order and take it next after we finish this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and for the record, every participant from the public must state their name and address for the record before.
Okay, so, um, Stacy, if you could please, in the chat, put in your, um, I see your name, but if you could please put in your full name and address so that we can, um, move this item next, so we can answer your question. All right, let's proceed with this. Um, did you finish reading the resolution, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez was, I, 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 I haven't seen him, uh, join in the meeting, so I'm gonna call Vice, uh, Commissioner Blanes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez, Mayor, if you can see Commissioner, uh, Suarez, I did not see when he, whether he has joined or not the meeting, whether he was part of the reading of the resolution, so.
No.
No, so, so far, Madam Mayor, we have four, um, zero votes, so this item passes.
You did not call mine, Madam Clerk, or did I vote not realize it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you're right. I was, yes, Madam Mayor, how do you vote?
I vote yes, thank you. I wasn't sure, I, I wasn't sure, maybe I did vote and I just didn't remember, okay. Um, thank you, Madam Clerk, and, and now I do, we do have, I'm looking at the chat, and I do have, I'd like to take item, uh, let me scroll up here, I'd like to take item eleven F out of order. And, is it eleven F? Yes, it's eleven F out of order. And for the record, the, um, the public that is at, have, has a question, I have a s- I have a Natalie Castillo, sixty-four eighty Southwest twentieth Terrace, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-five-five. And I have a Stacy Fandino, twenty fifty-three Southwest five-nine Avenue. And, uh, both Stacy and Natalie are employees of Nicholas Children's Hospital. And they are, are, um, wondering about, um, summer camp at the rec. So, if you could read item eleven F, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item eleven F, recommendation by the Officer of the City Manager and Director of Parks and Recreation to forego the twenty-twenty summer camp program due to COVID-nineteen restrictions following the new norm manual by City Manager and Park Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, if, if I may, uh, lead the conversation, and of course, uh, John's opinion and recommendation is extremely valuable. Uh, Megan, John, and I have met numerous occasions, every time there's an update to the manual, anytime there is, they are additional, um, changes to the new norm manual, we have met, we have looked at possibilities on how to proceed with, um, a limited summer camp, if, if you would. Um, we were slated to have an eleven-week program, and obviously COVID-nineteen had other plans for all of us. And so this being said, we looked at, uh, with the assistance of Mr. Pena, Mr. Martin Garcia, we have taken measurements, physical measurements of the West Miami multi, the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility building, which is where we house the children. And based on the square footage of the facility, we would only be able to have forty-five kids, um, that we would welcome to a very limited summer camp. Reason being is we would have to make an investment and divide, um, the, the whole large room concept. We would actually have to convert those into rooms, and the ratio is nine children, and, and John, stop me if I'm wrong, and, and Juan and Martin. Um, nine kids and one counselor to each room area that are, uh, based on the square footage or our capacity at this, at the, uh, multi-purpose. While the new norm manual encourage you to, uh, encourages for you to have outdoor events primarily during the summer, uh, and so that the children are not contained, this would allow very small areas for children to roam around, and even if we put them into age groups, the, the benefit is only for forty-five, forty-six kids. Generally, we have about two-hundred-and-seventy-five to three-hundred kids register at the City of West Miami Recreation Center. And while there's a, a good understanding that taxpayers fund one mil of the real estate and property taxes towards the Recreation Center on a yearly basis, is how do we do this? How is that determination made? Uh, to, who do we allow? Who, what, you know, what group do we allow it? Um, being that we are funded through grants from the state and at times from the county, I don't believe that we can limit the participation to West Miami children only. We would have to implement a methodology to have a mix of residents versus non-residents. So, um, it's very difficult, and for these very reasons that we're stating, and in an overabundance of caution, again, as our city attorney would ably put it, and with the new increases in the COVID-nineteen positive numbers that we're seeing, um, we're actually recommending that we forego the twenty-twenty summer camp. I mean, it's, uh, with a broken heart, uh, that, that I do this because this has been a, a, a very popular program throughout the years, and we get such, um, positive feedback. How do you tell a parent that you're not going to do this? I am a parent, I am a grandmother, and I would want my granddaughters or my children to be able to go and get out and about and resume his or her daily life. But I think, given the nature of our restrictions, I, I think we are wise and smart to recommend against opening this year. Ma- Madam Mayor.
Can I ask a question, uh, Madam Manager, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, uh, you, you, you mentioned that with the guidelines that are in place, um, with a new normal from the county, that the most that we could accommodate if we spent money to divide people, the kids around and stuff, the most we could accommodate is forty-five kids out of a usual, you said, up, up to three hundred. Um, the summer camp is funded by, usually funded by the registrations, right?
Correct.
Um.
That, that is a special activity.
So what is the, what would be the, I mean, I, I, I know your recommendation is, I'm just trying to put both options out there, what is the impact, um, does, that, would a, would a forty-five kid summer camp make up its deficit? What, what would be the, the estimated, um, deficit on that?
Um, well, i- it's kind of a, a wash, if you would, because if we don't have summer camp, we don't have to bring in summer camp employees, uh, teachers that we bring year-round, and the different activities that we pay for, for the children year-round. So, yes, we're losing income, but at the same time, we're saving money by limiting our park activities to whatever the new norm guide has established uh, and paved the way for parks to do, uh, like, uh, tennis lessons, basketball, walking around the park and have limited activities. So, I don't think that the, the losses is the big issue here. I think we're talking more of a, a, a benefit to the community, uh, or lack thereof. Um, I don't.
I was trying to.
Yeah, the, the financial component to me, right now, is not as important as, as the consideration, looking at it from a more globally perspective, if you would.
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Manager, um, and Vice Mayor for your question. Madam Manager, you know very well, you and I have had multiple conversations on this, going back and forth, um, every which way. I mean, you, you talked to me about plans A through Z that you and, and Megan and John put together, and I want to thank you, thank all of you for your efforts that you've done and to try to even get this off the ground, wait, in waiting to see in anticipation of the county opening it up for some, for summer camp. Um, and I completely understand where you're coming from. It's not so much financial, um, you know, out of two-hundred-and-fifty children that we would have, you know, we might have less this, this year because of, of the COVID. But how, how would we, you know, how would we choose? How would we go about accepting forty-five children out of two-hundred-and-fifty? That would be, put us in a very, very difficult and uh, just a situation. I, I, I agree, I don't want to enter that situation. Um, so I'd like to hear from, from John Michael, and then I'll open it up to the table for any comments or questions. John, did you have anything, or Megan? Have anything to add to what the City Manager reported?
No, that's, if anybody has any questions, but I agree with what the manager reported.
Um, thank you, John. Megan, did you have anything to add? Okay, um, can I hear from, can, can I hear from the table on this? Any comments or questions? I know the Vice Mayor already spoke. Uh, Commissioner Blanes, did you have anything on this?
Yeah, um, you know, in as much as I would like, you know, to, to, to open our recreational services, and in as much as I would like to see us return back to normality, um, you know, I, I'm torn, I'm torn with this decision, you know, but, and there's many, many other reasons, you know, that have been, uh, talked about, uh, and, and there's a lot of details that, uh, need to be covered. But, you know, in particular, you know, the one that, uh, the manager just mentioned, you know, we have, we have two-hundred-and-forty kids, and, you know, it just would not be fair to, in, in any way, that, that could, that this can be done where we, out of those two-hundred-and-fifty children, only, only forty of, forty to participate. And then, and then if we do allow for that, uh, quite frankly, I, I don't think the children will be happy to be there. Because, you know, there are all these restrictions, you know, that will not cause, you know, a good, uh, a good atmosphere, you know, for, uh, for the children. you know, for, uh, for the children to be socializing in, because, you know, of all, of all our restrictions. So, you know, I, i- this is heartfelt, I, you know, very, very hard decision to make, but, uh, I'm gonna have to, uh, agree with our administration.
Um, i- if, if I may, Madam Mayor, add something to, to what, um, has been said and how Commissioner Blanis feels. Um, in, in the, we've looked at the options for the possibility of opening, and we would actually have to rent out room dividers, which are curtain and piping type, where you see in these, uh, fashion shows and other events like that. We would have to contain these children to very small area, to areas, and there is no room for them to do social distancing. And how do you tell a six and seven-year-old child that he or she has to stay six feet away? So we're really running the risk of a child becoming exposed, um, to, to COVID nineteen, uh, or, or just, you know, the, 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 the facility itself, as, as large as we see the park, is not, does not lend itself for this type of activity with such limitations. And while they are encouraging an outdoor, um, you know, uh, uh, activities outdoors, we have to take into account that we are in the rainy season, and it rains. You have summer showers just about every day. You have thundering, you have lighting, lightning, and you have a lot of heat. And you don't want to expose the children to heat strokes. So I just wanted to put that in there further for your consideration.
Thank you, um, Madam Manager. Um, Commissioner Blanis, go ahead, please, sir.
Yeah, we, you know, we have two constituents that have not spoken on audio, but they're, they're posting their questions in the, in the chat room. And, you know, I don't know who needs to do this, but I think that these questions need to be read out loud since they are not going to participate in audio. I hope, I, I wish they did. That way, you know, we could really have a good participation, you know, because that's what this meeting is all about, you know, having the, you know, our public, our constituents voice themselves. So since they're not gonna participate in audio, I think that someone should read out loud their questions, and then whoever, uh, you know, can, can answer and, and address their, their concerns and their issues. I think, I think that would be, you know, uh, the thing to do here in this situation.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and I, and I have, I have the monitoring and reading, um, the comments. Um, so at this time, uh, Madam Manager or, or Madam Clerk, if either one of you have access, it can see the chat, if you could read, if you could please read a, a question or comment that's been posed.
Yes, there is a statement by Ms. Fandino, uh, from what I see, and she, if I could read it, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
It says Miami-Dade County Parks have already opened. I feel that our children have already suffered for being removed from school early. They have missed out on so much already. We have guidelines and recommendations from CDC regarding reopening. Children need to socialize. The community, state, county plays a huge role in bringing back some normalcy to our children. It's everyone's responsibility to follow CDC regulations regarding COVID nineteen. I think that first responders and essential workers should take priority. It's difficult to have to say who deserves or should take priority, but that doesn't mean you should just walk away from the situation. That's what I see on the chat. If anybody sees, uh, uh, any other comments that I was unable to see, please let us know.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is the only, or the last one that I see as well. Thank you for reading that. Thank you for reading that out loud. Um, do I have any questions or comments? Um, uh. Any questions or comments? Any input from anyone on the table? Okay, um.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go, I, yes, I, I don't see you, so please, when I ask, please speak out, because I'm having to scroll to see everyone. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you. If it's, uh, just to shed some light on, on the issue, yesterday, we had the managers' meeting conference calls, and I think only a handful of cities are opening a ver, uh, for a very limited summer camp program. Miami-Dade, but again, they have mu- a multitude of, of venues, uh, and options that they're exploring for a limited summer camp. I believe, um, City of Miami as well, but they have the several venues in Miami-Dade County, because again, they have more parks than we do. So the smaller cities are not contemplating a summer camp program at this time.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Anybody else? Okay, um. Uh, this was a recommendation, it's not, uh, we don't need a motion or a vote, um. And I guess, I guess I should say, um, for the sake of, of the residents, that, that, um, we're wondering, please don't think that we are simply walking away from this. We have been discussing this for, I would say, well of a month, right, Madam Manager?
We've been, we've been discussing this since March sixteenth, Madam Mayor.
Okay, longer than that. I mean, this, this, the children have been first and foremost in our minds. Um, you know, we've been discussing this even as far as back as when we, you know, we're thinking of opening, um, Cooper Park and opening the recreation center, um, not for summer camp, but just for, for, for resident, for use. So we have been discussing this for a very long time, and, and the children have always been first and foremost, um, in the front of our minds and thoughts on this. Um, you know, we were waiting for, for the county to give the go-ahead, but all along, we were, we were planning to see how we could do this. So please don't think that we're, we're simply walking away from it. We have given this, uh, an extreme amount of thought and consideration. Uh, I have to agree with the man, I, I, I mean, I personally, I'm, I'm going to take the recommendation of staff. Um, my, my, I mean, my being a grandparent, I know, you know, my, my grandchildren are the same as everybody else. They've been inside for, for so long and, um, don't, the rec is still gonna be open. Even if we don't have summer camp, I need everyone to know that the rec is still going to be open as we have it now. I believe it's what, Monday through Saturday, ten to seven, right? Am I right?
Correct. Uh, for, Saturday is, uh, eleven to four.
Yeah.
Uh, perfect. And, and, um, obviously, we're following the CDC guidelines on that, as far as for the parents, so, you know, grandparents to bring their, um, their little ones to the park and, and, and be able to be, be outside with them, not cooped up in the house. But as far as I'm concerned, I, I have to take the recommendation of staff. I know they've given this such, so much thought, and it's with a heavy heart, as the manager said, that, that I'm gonna take the recommendation, because this is the last thing I wanted to do. I wanted to open up summer camp. I've, I've always been beyond, you know, supporting our summer camp and our after-school program. So, um, it's with a very, very heavy heart that I'm, I'm going to, um, listen to staff and take the recommendation. But I want to hear from, um, from everyone on the table. So, uh, Commissioner Blanis, I believe you are ready. Did you everybody, uh, say you were taking the recommendation of staff? Am I remembering correctly?
Ye- yes, I did, you know.
Okay.
Again, I have a heavy heart too about this too, you know, I want to see, you know, I want to see the kids, you know, enjoying themselves, you know, as, as they should, and, um, but, you know, there's so many restrictions and so many regulations, you know, and, and, um, I don't think that the circumstances are gonna be adequate for them. And from, you know, going from two hundred and fifty kids to forty kids, only forty kids, that's not fair to the rest of them. So I will have to take the administration recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Blanca?
I agree with the City Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendation.
Thank you. Um, so it's unanimous, we are going to take the rec, and, and for the record, Commissioner Suarez has yet to join the meeting, um, or actually say he's not back in the meeting. So, um, um, we are all taking the recommendation of staff on item eleven F. And I want to thank, um, Stacy and Natalie for their questions and for being a part of the discussion. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item eleven D, report by the Office of Director of Public Works in reference to Freebie pilot program and recommendation for implementation over ninety-day trial through September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Mr. Penna?
I'm waiting on the manager. Are you, uh, going to recuse yourself or just report or what?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor, as, as previously advised, I, I, while I don't have a direct conflict with this issue, I think it's in my best interest, because a fa- a, a family member of mine represents Freebie, I would rather be excused for a couple of minutes from the presentation or any recommendation moving forward on this matter. I, I'll, I'll ask my assistant to call me back in the room whenever you're done with this issue.
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Uh, Mr. Penna, go ahead, please.
Uh, Madam Mayor, we met, I met with, uh, Harry and, uh, Jason from Freebie, uh, a week ago, and we discussed the phasing out of our Jitney Loop system to a on-demand system like Freebie offers. Um, they are, uh, able to provide us with that service as soon as we're ready. Uh, their charge, uh, for the Freebie service is, uh, seventy-one hundred dollars a month. Uh, obviously, we would, uh, offset that with a, uh, with the cost savings we have from the retired employee and, uh, the no-longer use of our Jitney Loop. Uh, in addition, there will also be advertising dollars that we would, uh, receive credit from for, uh, companies such as the Estates, uh, the different other buildings that are owned by Grand Peaks and, uh, uh, Baptist Hospital Publix, anybody that would wish to, uh, advertise on Freebie. Uh, Freebie basically is an on-demand system, uh, available through a phone app, uh, where it takes you within a geo-fence that we create, uh, and takes the person, uh, from their house to wherever they want to go. Uh, during COVID, they are limiting it to, uh, one group at a time. And after each delivery that, of that group, they, uh, stop and sanitize the vehicle and, uh, respond to the next call. Um, uh, the other service that we would provide to the school, as far as picking up the kids after school, we would do that with the, with the present, uh, driver that we have. And, um, uh, we would continue to do that when school's back in session.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Now, it says here, this is a ninety-day trial, so we're not entering into any, I mean, if we approve this, we're not in, entering into any contract, we're simply going in for the first ninety days to see if it, if it's a good fit for our city, is that correct? There's no commitment beyond the ninety days, is that correct?
That's correct. It would be a ninety-day trial period, uh, and obviously, there will be a contract for that ninety day.
Right, right.
We would decide whether we want to go forward or not after that.
Now, I'm sorry, and you might have said it, and I apologize if I missed it. I know you said this was an app-based service, service, but I know, you know, we do have a, um, we have a lot of seniors in our, in our city. Is there also a call, a, a number that they, let's say, what, for whatever reason, a senior doesn't, uh, doesn't wish to or doesn't know how to use the app, is there a number they could call, like, you know, that, like they're used to doing, um, for this service?
Yes, we can, uh, we can publish that on our website, they could look it up on the internet. Uh, there is a phone number that they can call and also schedule a pickup.
And this is one hundred percent at no cost to our residents, correct? Meaning they don't pay for any, they don't pay for these rides of this door-to-door service, correct? Okay.
Madam Mayor, eh, is, is there a grant for this service?
No, this is, uh, this will be paid from the cert tax funding that we receive on the half penny tax for the part of transportation.
We're basically, if, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Penna, Commissioner Blanca, we're using the money that we use to fund our, uh, I believe it was called the Hour Loop, right, Mr. Penna?
That's correct.
Yes, and, and Commissioner Blanca, you know that Pedrito retired, so we, we had the, um, the opportunity to trial Freebie, uh, upon his retirement, um, to see if it, if it's a, if it's a good fit for our community.
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Are there any? Yes, go ahead, sir.
The, you know, I'm a big Freebie fan, going back to my days on the half penny board. But, um, is it ninety-day trial period, or is it, is it something that we, um, put forward? Or is it something that they put forward to measure costs?
No, we, we put it forward in order to see if it's actually gonna be a viable, uh, uh, service to the community. Uh, we want to see how much on-demand they get during those days. Uh, they will also provide us with reports on their, on their amount of calls that they get, uh, the destinations that they, they, they go to. Obviously, um, it all depends on how attractive we make the geo-fence in order for people to use it. And, um, uh, one of my recommendations, if we decide to go forward, would be the geo-fence to extend as far as, uh, Children's Hospital, uh, to the south and to the west, uh, at least Trail Plaza and the Walmart that, uh, is on H Street, uh, Seventieth Avenue. And also, uh, to, uh, link us with, uh, a trip, uh, over to Miracle Mile, uh, right at the border edge, and then come back, leaving them the ability to pick up the Coral Gables, uh, Freebie at that point, or any other system that they have.
Right, so the, um, I know when, when I met with them, a couple of months ago, probably was, um, they were talking about one or two vehicles. Um, is that something that you've already discussed with them as part of the ninety-day trial?
The ninety-day trial will give us the, 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 the demand, and that will determine whether we need more than one vehicle.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for your questions, Vice Mayor. And, and Mr. Penna, are they willing to start, um, soon, like during this, you know, the, the COVID period? I know you, you're talking about the, the sanitizing in between, in between rides. So are they willing to start this trial, like, soon?
They're ready to start Monday if we get to go ahead.
They're, okay, well, that's, that's soon. Um, and, um, as far as geo-fencing, I want to be sure we, we, um, I, I, I should say, when, uh, as the Vice Mayor said, when I met with them, this was many months ago. Um, I do believe they said we could designate certain locations outside of our city, not just the, not just the geo-fence area, but specifically certain locations that are outside of that area. Um, so is that still, would that still be in consideration as part of this trial? Because there are certain places outside of our, our city, uh, boundaries that, you know, a lot of our residents frequent. So if it's outside of the geo-fence, um, or maybe it's not, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to picture the geo-fence in my mind that you described.
Hmm. We, 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 we've included a lot in geo-fence. I mean, we'll go over it with, if you appoint somebody from the, from the commission, or if you want to participate and, uh, select them to geo-fence, and, uh, discussions with them in order to see what, what will work for us.
Okay.
You don't want to make the geo-fence too far where somebody else is going to be affected in a longer waiting period.
Right, no, no, I understand, and I remember that from the conversation.
Yeah, the hours of operation, from what I can recall, I think they said nine to six, but we could, uh, change those hours, uh, depending on how we wanted to operate.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, on that note, I, I would like to see it a little bit later, um, obviously, for like, um, you know, dinner purposes and after work, you know, going to, to Publix and things like that af- after work. So I personally would like to see a little later. So yes, I, I think, um, if you could, um, make time for, to sit with all of us or hear from all of us individually on as far as the geo-fence and our thoughts on that, I, I would greatly appreciate that, giving you my input on that. Um, so yes, uh, is, is, are there any other questions on, on this item from the table? Or any other comments from staff, any other input from anybody else?
We had a question on the chat, which was the hours of operation. We had a question on the chat, which was the hours of operation, and from Maria Diaz at 6246 Southwest 15th Street. And she would recommend a later hours if possible, extending it later hours beyond 6:00.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Diaz. And that was, those were exactly my thoughts. So I'd like to see later as well. So we will definitely work that out with Mr. Penna, so he can go back to Freebie. And I personally, I'd like to see this trial get started as soon as possible. I think it's going to be a great fit for our community, and I'd like to, I'd like to see if everyone else thinks the same. So if I have no other questions or comments, Madam Clerk, did you read the resolution already?
Not yet, Madam Mayor.
Okay, if you could read the resolution, please.
Sure. Item 11E, this is a resolution authorizing the City Manager or he's designated to enter into an agreement with Freebie for a 90-day trial transit program and geo-fencing the limits of the transit purpose between the City of West Miami and Freebie, providing for the funding to come from the 20% PTP revenue source from Miami-Dade County further collapsing the city's PTP citywide loop due to the bond system until September 30, 2020, providing an effective date.
Thank you. I got a first and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Motion by Commissioner Blanca, who made the second?
No, the motion, I think, was Vice Mayor, and I believe the second was Blanca, if I'm not mistaken.
Motion by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón and second by Commissioner Blanca. Noted. You want me to call the vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Blanas, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
4-0. Item passes.
And Mr. Penna, please schedule time with all of us to discuss the geo-fencing and the hours, if you would, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can someone let the manager know that we have completed that item and are moving on to the next before we proceed?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I see that she's back. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item 11G, report of the City Manager regarding allocation/reallocation of Recreation Center staff until further notice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commission Members. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
All right, so in light of the fact that we, that we recommended and you accepted our recommendation to forego summer camp, for the record, I would like for you to know that we have done everything to leave everyone pretty much untouched, every employee of the city. We have not furloughed anyone. And what we have done since the allocation by Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa, what we have done is reassigned employees that are currently budgeted year-round to work at a recreation center. They're now reassigned to the community center, working their normal hours so that we can deliver the meals to 190 clients that are being served on a daily basis. So this has really tremendously helped Evelyn Paz and her department because Greater Miami was not able to perform the deliveries for these meals. So we're utilizing the staff. They have, they have actually been trained and they have the route down fact. So it's a great service to the city. And I have talked to John Michael Lopez for him to stay at the rec, obviously, because there is some activity, although limited, but there is some activity at the rec. And I would like to also steal from John Michael the ability to, for Megan to come to work for us for the remainder of the summer until John needs her back in preparation for the fall school opening. And again, we're already starting to look at the fall opening for the Miami-Dade County Public Schools and charter schools and parochial schools, and we're following the new norm guides on that so that we can get ready to see if we can go back to some sense of normalcy with our after-school program. In the meantime, I would like to have Megan assigned to our office and help us out so that everyone is protected by the, you know, the uncertainty brought about by COVID-19. So we trust that you agree with our decisions here, where we place individuals to help out.
Madam Manager, thank you. And I'm going to take this time to say how grateful I am to, obviously, you and everyone else who's done, who's worked so hard in not having, in doing everything we can to keep every one of our employees employed. I know there are some municipalities that had to furlough, and we did not. And I am so grateful to you and everyone else who did so much to be sure that that didn't happen. And to Evelyn and her staff, you know, the exceptional job they've done in providing these meals to all our seniors, you know, off-site, and to John and his staff for stepping up and joining the community center staff in being able to provide these, to get these meals to our seniors. I just, you know, everyone's gone over and above, and I just have to thank everyone at this time. You've all done an exceptional job. John, I know it's a big ask to ask for your right-hand woman, but she's needed at City Hall. So I know it's a big ask, but I know the City Manager could definitely use her help at City Hall. So with that said, does anyone else have any other comments or questions on the City Manager's reporting of the reallocation of the rec center staff?
The only request is that anybody who's not being used, I could use.
Okay, well, there we go. John, Park Director, could I get some comments from you?
As long as I get them all back eventually.
Mr. Penna?
That's going to be up, not for me.
Mr. Penna, sharing is caring, and we're going to get Megan up here, and we will share our wealth, if you would.
There's a comment, there's a comment from Megan. Megan says, Juan, I will be there on Monday. Megan, I don't think you're going to Juan. I think you're going to City Hall. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm sure the three of you will work out who's going where and how. And I just, you know, thank you all for everyone working together and making this happen and getting us through this this unusual time that we're all living through. So thank you to all of you. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item 11H, report by Chief Avila regarding acceptance of Jack Edward Burne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, residual funds for the purchase of 20 computers, monitors, printers, and search protectors by Chief Avila.
Take it away, Chief.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Manager, and the Commission. This is, I'm going to try to make a long story short. This has been going on since 2018. We originally had a huge problem with our server, and we did not have money for funding to replace it at the time. So we made a request to, it's a program called the Residual Funds Program from the Edward Burne Justice Memorial Grant. In other words, the JAG grant. They never came through. They never even notified us of anything. And in 2019, we went ahead and made a change. We had to replace the server. It went down. And then we went ahead and changed the request to replace the laptop computers in the police cars because they were very old and they were in a state of disrepair. And they never said anything to us. In February, I was notified that after we purchased in January, in other words, I was notified on February 5. In January, according to them, we were awarded the grant. They never notified us. And in January, we actually bought the new, from Impact Feas, we bought the new with your approval, the laptop computers for the police cars. So on February 5, I began begging and pleading to FDLE to please allow us to change it to the desktop computers in the police department. We were in our dire need of new desktop computers. They are constantly in a state of disrepair. The only thing keeping us going is Mr. Q, who is constantly repairing our computers and keeping us up. Either way, the grant was finally approved in March, in other words, to change it from the laptops to the desktop computers, and we were approved for $30,000 in expenses. We have been able to secure the quotes for extremely expensive computers, 20 of them in total, printers, monitors, backup and search protectors, for the total amount of $28,881. And they will be delivered immediately. And the most important thing, not one cent from the taxpayer will be used. They are completely funded by FDLE.
Thank you, Chief. That is wonderful, wonderful, wonderful news. Any questions or comments on this item? Chief, I don't, this was just a report. I don't think you need anything from us, right? This is a go, correct?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Upon hearing no questions or comments on that item, Madam Clerk, if you could proceed to the next item, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, let the record reflect that Commissioner Blanca has left the meeting. She's
Do we have quorum, right?
Yes, we have Commissioner Blanes. We have Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón, and you have, we have your attendance, Mayor. So you have quorum.
Okay. Perfect. Proceed to the next item, please, then.
Yes, item 12. This is the Consent Agenda Items. And as we stated before, this can be approved by one motion, second, and vote, or you can pull the items if you would like to disclose.
Upon hearing no request to pull the items, I need a motion on the Consent Agenda Items, please.
Motion to move all items.
I need a second. Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
4-0. Item passes.
Next item, please.
Item 13, put of the order.
Is there anything for put of the order? Upon hearing nothing, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, second. Do I have a second?
Yes, we do.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance. Have a great day.
Thank you.
See you soon.